Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Monday, May 23, 2022, at 7:00 PM here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as our law.
Item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Excused.
Counselor Catrona. Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Very good. We have a form. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council Meeting minutes of Monday, May 9, 2022.
Second.
Very good. Any questions, comments, deletions, additions, substitutions? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Subcommittee reports. General Government Chairman, Council Chair Ryan, not Council Chair, Committee Chair Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight, including budget items and items 27 through 32. I'll talk about those items then, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting and the agenda items tonight that we voted on, agenda item number 35, 36, 37. We don't have any meetings scheduled. Thank you.
Very good. Education and Human Services, Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two items. We had a meeting last week. There are two items, items 25 and 26 on tonight's agenda. We do have a meeting scheduled for June 1st to discuss transfers that are needed for departments. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We'll postpone planning and development. We'll move on to protection of persons and property. Counselor Lazo.
I have no report at this time. Counselor Jovan, member of the PPP, filled in. If he has any comment, be welcomed.
That was the meeting before.
Okay. No report at this time, Chairman.
Very good.
They all blend in, I know, Counselor.
Not a problem. Okay, let's move on, please. Agenda item number five, Chairman's announcements. I have no announcements this evening. Agenda item number six, Town Manager's announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, residents, and those watching at home. The only announcements I have this evening are coming through our Board of Health. They just want me to remind everybody that yard waste drop-off at DPW at 185 Gopher Road is open for the season. It will run through late fall and that there's a 2022 curbside yard waste collection schedule, which is running April 18 through May 27. Please place the leaves in paper bags. No plastic bags will be accepted. No sand or dirt in the bags. Compost bins are available through the Health Department for $25 if people are interested. You can make the checkout to the, excuse me, please check out the town's website under Trash and Recycling for information on composting. And the Jacob Edwards Library is another great resource as well. Rain barrels are also available through the town. They're currently sold out and they placed another order. They expect delivery in mid-June. Again, those are $25 for residents. They're 45% off retail. Recycling, reminder, recycling is mandatory for all Southbridge residents and businesses pursuant to Massachusetts Code regulations and also follows the goals of Southbridge under Chapter 111 of Mass. General Law, as well as the Town of Southbridge health code regulations. Also important, this fall, there'll be a ban on textiles from disposal, which will include clean, dry clothing, footwear, bedding, towels, curtains, fabrics, and other similar products, including mattresses. So if you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Board of Health about any of those. And that's all I have this evening.
Very good. Agenda item number seven, the presentation by the Veterans Council, Southbridge Initiative Brief, would have been Counselor David Adams. I'd like a motion, please, to postpone that till June 6.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous of all present? Agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to approach the podium this evening to discuss an item not on tonight's agenda? Please approach.
Donald Solinsky, Henry Street. I want to say, at the end of the last Town Council meeting, Counselor Jovan continues to say I am making disparaging comments and should not be allowed to do so. Well, how about the board making disparaging comments? Anytime I have been out of line at a meeting, I've apologized at the next meeting because you took my dog from me and he was my only companion for 11 years because he was choking. However, I have had disparaging things said against me by certain council members. Not only has there never been apologies, there have been lies that it was never said, even when it was on tape. I am not sure what you big boys, as you call yourselves, call it in your book, but it's a lie. This is no debate. This is no opinion. You strongly imply that I am lying. You parrot my challenge and tell the Southbridge residents to view the tapes. I will once again specify what tapes to view and quote exactly what was said. January 24, 2022, Counselor Lazo called me a psycho after Citizens Forum. It's on tape, for God's sake, yet he denies he ever said so. September 27, 2021, Town Council meeting, you voted 6 to 3 to follow the ACO's recommendation to euthanize my dog. And I quote her once again. My recommendation is to bring him to a vet and have final services performed on this dog. And yet you lie and say the board never voted to kill my dog. I am not making this stuff up. All the residents of Southbridge have to do is view the Town Council meeting on YouTube, for God's sake. It is not my opinion and it's not my view. It's a fact. It's on tape. For the Town Council members to continue to deny it and others remain silent and not clarify that the majority of you voted to kill my dog is extremely alarming. Speaking of disparaging statements, as I left the podium at the last time I was here, I heard one of you call me a psycho once again. Who said that? You want to own up to it? Because it's on tape. You can hear it. And the idiot who did it had the microphone right in front of his face and he didn't realize it. I didn't think anyone would fess up to it, you know? I know when I challenge you, I have no problem facing you face-to-face, any one of you. And I would appreciate the same thing. These five minutes are definitely providing the Town of Southbridge a glimpse into this board and how you people treat the citizens. You look down on us. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium this evening?
Hi, I'm Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. I encourage everyone to stop littering. In my attempt to beautify Southbridge a few weeks ago, I thought, why can't people hold on to their bottle, cup, butt, vape canisters, plastic bags, et cetera, until they reach a trash can? In addition to these items, there were three plastic bags of leaves on the rail trail. Yard waste is collected in paper bags, as the Town Manager just said, seasonally and at quarterly household hazardous waste days. If you feel compelled to rake up this free fertilizer and mulch, don't put it in a plastic bag and dump it. The leaves biodegrade and the empty bag is left as pollution. Luckily, I didn't see any balloons on this cleanup, but I have seen them plenty of other times. They are the bane of my existence. I thought I'd throw in a little Shakespeare there to see if you're paying attention. Balloons are the worst, either the thick latex or the miler ones. They are not reusable or recyclable in any way. Once they are no longer inflated, balloons are simply light plastic bags which float on water or are carried by wind to litter elsewhere. Some animals can mistake them as animals, like jellyfish, and eat them. And they can get lodged in their bodies. If you want the festiveness or attention-grabbing qualities of balloons, why not use reusable bright material layered creatively or reusable balloons? They are out there. Search for them on the web. Other ideas, paper flowers, pinwheels, bunting, much better than balloons. At this time of year, people may be thinking of tossing litter into the sky, not caring where it ends up. That is essentially what balloon releases are. And I would encourage you to find another way to celebrate graduations or grand openings, et cetera. If you need another reason not to use balloons, think of the helium shortage. Helium has a lot of medical uses, like in MRI scanners. So it can be so useful, so why let it go to a stupid use like a balloon? Back to beautify Southbridge, it was nice to see the turnout of residents and their handiwork in yellow bags around town, but this is one community event I want to make obsolete. Mother Earth is not our trash can. Thank you.
Thank you. Please approach.
Hello, Maddie Bonnades, 947 Dennison Drive. I just want to remind everyone that the last day to register to vote will be this Wednesday, May 25, and the Town Clerk's office will be open from 8 to 8. And also, on another note, absentee ballots are now available and anyone can come to Town Hall or call the office and we'll mail you an application for an absentee ballot. And the election will be held on Tuesday, June 14, 2022, and voting will be back at the community center. Thank you.
Very good. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium to discuss an issue not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, let's move on. Agenda item number nine, vote to adopt the fiscal year 2023 Town of Southbridge General Fund operating budget per the attached voting document in the amount of $59,873,045 to be funded as follows. Raise and appropriate $58,296,503. Transfers from other available funds. Sale of street list books, $500. Cable operating account, $196,934. Debt service reserve, $950,000. Perpetual care interest, $2,000. Access road debt service, $338,065. Landfill reimbursement fund, $80,213. Sale of lots and graves, $5,000. Subtotal transfers from other available funds, $1,572,712. Other transfers, Bay Path bond premium, $3,830. Subtotal other transfers, $3,830. Total general fund budget, $59,873,045. I'll take a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Very good. At this point, I'd like to read from the voting document. And if counselors wish to hold an item, to please call out the hold as I go through the items and then we'll come back to it and we'll circle it on and come back to it. Okay? What's that? Very good. Section 3, General Government. Town Council, $20,650. Town Manager, $317,697. Town Accountant, $185,310. Assessors, $202,949. Treasurer/Collector, $366,979. Town Attorney, $117,500. Human Resources, $152,938. Town Clerk, $203,313.
Hold.
Thank you. Elections and registration, less sale of street list books, account number 66730, Planning Board, $85,324. Economic Development, $16,810. Cable TV Advisory Committee, less cable operating budget, $196,934. General Government Program Accounts, Administration. Audit Fees, $37,500. Copy machine costs, $17,000. Telephone, $45,000. Postage, $45,000. Natural gas, $65,000. Heating fuel, $64,000. Property management miscellaneous, $12,000. Reserve for property repair, maintenance, and demo, $50,000. Fuel and lubricants, $272,000. Subtotal Administration, $607,500. Data processing, $315,819. Council Reserve, $100,000.
Hold.
Hold. Contributory Retirement, $4,272,107. Personnel, sick vacation leave buyback, $20,075. Recruitment and processing, $9,000. Tuition, $12,000. Employer Medicare Tax, $159,000. Subtotal Personnel, $200,075. Group Health and Life, $4,300,000. General Insurance, Workers' Compensation, $245,000. Police and Fire Indemnification, $69,000. Unemployment Compensation, $40,000. Property and Liability Insurance, $335,000. Deductible Liability, $30,000. Subtotal General Insurance, $719,000. Boards, Committees, Commissions. Central Mass Regional Planning, $5,338. Conservation Commission, $1,000. Zoning Board of Appeals, $250. Historical Commission, $500. Licensing Board, $500. Subtotal Boards and Committees, $7,588. Debt Service. Principal on Debt, $2,193,947. Interest on Long-Term Debt, $755,669. Interest on Short-Term Debt, $35,000. Issuance Expense, $2,500. Is that a total, Karen? Total of $2,987,116. Special Accounts. Revaluation Services, $35,000. Ambulance Billing Services, $33,000. Medicaid Billing, $20,000. Other Post-Employment Benefits, $5,100. Subtotal Special Accounts, $93,100. Public Safety. Oh, I'm sorry. Government, General Government Total, $15,576,410. I apologize. Public Safety. Police.
Hold.
And that's all? Did I hear that correctly? Thank you. Fire, $2,807,130.
Hold.
Inspections, $154,704.
Hold.
Public Safety Program Accounts, Streetlights, $220,000. Total Public Safety Program, $220,000. Public Safety Total, $7,953,676. Public Works. DPW Operations and Administration, $1,968,809.
Hold.
DPW Snow and Ice, $400,000. Public Works Total, $2,368,809. Human Services. Health Department, $666,975. Veteran Services, $74,314.
Hold.
Community Center, $49,352. Library, $567,427. Recreation, $71,228. EHS Program Accounts. Veterans Benefits, $135,000. Veterans Memorials, $3,200. EHS Program Accounts, $138,200. Human Services Total, $1,567,496. Education. Southbridge Public Schools, $30,537,793. Southbridge Public Schools Capital, $300,000. Southbridge Public Schools Master Facility Study, $300,000. Southbridge Public Schools Total, $31,137,793. Southern Westakani Regional School District, Bay Path, $1,46,611. Southern Westakani Regional School District, Bay Path, Debt Service, $222,250. Subtotal for Bay Path, $1,268,861. Education Total, $32,406,654. General Fund Totals, $59,873,045. Okay. Let's go back to the held items. First held item was the Town Clerk amount. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I specifically held this on behalf of the General Government Subcommittee, which voted 5 to 0 to recommend an increase to Maddie's, Bonnades's pay to an increase of step of A9 Step 1, which is a total budget number of $85,207 and an increase of $2,113 to the department grand total. So the new department total would be 205,426, and I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Steves.
When we were there and discussing this issue, this is, first of all, just with clarification for the public, this has been an issue that's kind of been thrown around at GenGov for at least two or three years now.
Seven to eight.
Has it been that long already? Wow. Anyway, for a while. So anyway, my point is that while we were there, the manager and Ms. Harnes were there, and I just wanted to see, to go through you to them, to see, we were talking about the issues of having this, if we were going to do this, how would we do it without affecting the bottom line of the budget? And I remember that we had talked about that briefly and I thought we were under the impression that you were going to try to come up with something. I may be wrong, but... Is there any, is there some way we can do that?
Mr. Chairman, through you, honestly, I don't recall that question.
Okay.
And I don't know if I, I may be off-base, but I don't recall being asked to find it within the budget. I mean, the only way you could do that is really to look at the expenses within that department because you have salary. And I have not discussed that with Ms. Bonnades, how we would find that $2,000.
Okay.
What's that?
At the moment.
What's that? Anyone else? Counselor Jovan.
Yeah, through you. I've just, I want, for point of clarification, are we changing her, this position? I don't, I brought this up last year and the previous year when this keeps coming up. We're talking position, not personality, not person. Are we changing the schedule to accommodate and what would precipitate change in an adjustment on the schedule to whatever level? I don't have a Schedule 1 in front of me to find out where on the schedule, you said it was an A, is that what you said? I don't have the schedule. Nobody here has a schedule, so...
I can repeat the number again if you'd like.
Well, no. Where on the schedule is it, Madam Chair, from General Government? Where on the schedule? You said it was a schedule change?
We're recommending an increase in the budget as well because it would have to reflect that change.
I understand that, but are you also changing the schedule of where that position places?
Yes. And there was a long discussion at General Government, if I can, if I can talk, unless you're finished.
Does somebody have the schedule available for us this evening? So I know where we're, what other positions are on that schedule that you're putting this position to? And is it equitable across the personnel policies? That's the question I have.
I don't, I don't have the exact schedule in front of me myself.
It's in the paper.
However, oh, it is. Yes, that's right, because we would be voting on it later tonight, aren't we?
It's what?
We're voting on the schedules later tonight, aren't we?
I have a Schedule 5 for tonight. Is there a Schedule 1 for tonight?
Okay. All right.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, what, what research was done to bring this to make that onto that level on the schedule for Schedule 1?
So I guess my, I'll start with the brief synopsis of the meeting.
Are you recognized by the chair to respond? I'm just asking, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Just for point of concern.
I have the floor. Thank you. So, as I will explain, the item has been coming up for seven to eight years now because Maddie has been addressing this. Now, one thing that came clear from that meeting was that the manager, the comment made by the manager was, this has to come from the Town Council. I don't have jurisdiction over this employee, so I won't be making a recommendation. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
I believe the charter is quite clear, Madam Clerk. That is correct. I've been asked in the past, and we did a salary survey, and last year when I was asked my opinion, and if you want to ask me an opinion, I'm happy to give you.
All right. If you wanted to give your opinion, you go right ahead.
I think the only issue that I've had is, you know, separating the person from the position and whether or not making one position relative to supervisory capacity, we have other people that are in similarly situated positions that aren't at that level, then are we going to look to address that in terms of equity? And then many of the other positions that we've advanced or talked about here, we've been asked to do an updated salary survey relative to comps for pay and responsibility. We didn't do one for that this year because I didn't advocate it, but last year, when this was presented to me, we felt based on the comparables that we saw at that time... this was presented to me, we felt based on the comparables that we saw at that time, that we were paying an adequate amount based on the responsibilities, given the size of the community. So if I was asked, I don't know that I would adjust it up, because then I would have to look at doing that for several other positions, and I didn't prepare to do that in this particular budget.
All right, thank you. So the comments that were presented at the committee were that these, Matty has one come forward multiple times requesting this, those other departments have not come forward, they have not advocated for themselves, I don't care about those departments until they come and advocate for themselves. If you want to come up and say, "I deserve more," come up and say, "I deserve more." But until then, I don't think that's a fair comparison. However, the jobs and roles of the town clerk have clearly evolved in a rapid environment, especially with the COVID pandemic. So the jobs have consistently evolved, and if you look around the clerks around us, which I don't think is a fair comparison to do that comparison, because the clerks around us are not nearly as senior as Ms. Bonadie's is, not even close, and the work that was done in instituting the new regulations and being on top of those new regulations during the pandemic, she was the only one in the area to do it flawlessly and perfectly. So I think there has been a consistent showing that she's consistently adopted, local, the early voting is a perfect prime example of how she had to change her staff processes to accommodate local elections in the middle of the pandemic. This clerk has consistently shown that she's willing to change her modest operandi to adapt to the regulations into what this community needs. I also think that we're talking about retention, we're talking about recruitment, 50% turnover rate. We're losing all the people with experience. It's not just new people coming and going, it's experienced people leaving too. And we talk about wanting to retain our good employees, when a lot of town clerks are now appointed, that clerk could go somewhere else with all the experience and training and get a better salary anywhere else. But she's choosing to stay here for $2,113. We can reward her work in continuing evolving of the position in the way that we only can, because the manager cannot do it. So, that's it, thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
Wow. Now, let me understand this, there was a, there was a vote at subcommittee to what? To bring the old salary forward?
No, the vote from the subcommittee was unanimous to amend it, to increase, to reflect that step increase. That was the recommendation from the subcommittee.
Okay.
It was unanimous of all votes.
The problem I'm having is that usually when you do a pay scale, you do the whole scale, because what you're doing is, if you do one, and then the other, and this is where the manager is correct, I think, he, we used to do this on school side, where you would, you would hinder one department head position, and then all the department heads want the same thing. So when you do this, it's going to be, I thought retainage was the 70/30 insurance was big, and again, to the council, we're doing a lot of great things. Can the town afford all these great things? We're going to find out in the future, because usually you fall on your own numbers if you just keep spending and spending, so we'll, we'll be around for that. This, I'm having a problem with, because we're not looking at all of the department heads that are at that pay scale. If you do one, you do them all, that's the way it works. If you're wanting to tax it, tax the home roof some more, and do more, I thought it was worth the health insurance kick for our employees. I always put the employees first to the best of our ability, but in some cases, you have to do it fairly, and I think picking one out of everybody at that step is, I think, unfair, but I could be wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Counsel Jovan.
Thank you. Again, through you. I'm not questioning the person's performance or the rationale for possibly a higher increase. What I'm trying to determine here through my question, and I apologize for not making the meeting, I did have some health issues that prohibited me to be at some of those meetings, so it was out of neglect of not wishing to participate, my question to, through you is, through the chair, to you, to the chair respectfully, is, you're taking this position from an MS9 to an A9, correct? Only to a, that's what I heard, Counsel, or MS13? I'm sorry, MS18. So what I'm saying, what I'm trying to determine here, you're taking it from an MS category to an A category, and was that solely, there's a whole ream of positions that are in that, town manager, DPW director, they're all directors and tax collector and all that, how, what was the determination, the rationale, and the conversations with the personnel department that we're changing a whole different position to a different category? So there's MS18, so we picked an A category instead of going up to an MS19, and MS19 would be another step increase. I, I'm all for paying people for performance and rewarding good employees, what I'm struggling here is how we can rationalize going from an MS position to an A position and do it at budget time, and this comes up every budget time. This should be something that's discussed, last year, these questions came up at the end of budget and said, "We believe there's an issue or disparity in this." And instead of tackling it a year ago, when we would have had a whole year to look at personnel practices and other jobs and other dialogue, and really do a comprehensive study on this, to say, "Hey, council, this position should be changed to a different level, and here's why." Not just because of performance in the individual, but this is the rationale for doing it. I can't support this tonight, and it's not based on the performance of the individual, but based on how we're doing this to change a category at budget time. If it's come up for seven years, it, it comes up every year at budget time, and there's no dialogue the day after budget to say, "Hey, this is why and how I want to do this." Council, debate it. So that's my point, I just can't rationalize changing from an MS position to an A position. Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To address what Counsel Jovan was just saying, I'd like to point out that if you look at the, what the town clerk actually does, regardless of who's holding that position, that person is essentially a department director, because they do have staff under them, whereas the person who is currently with them in, as an MS18 category right now, the town planner does not. The assistant building commissioner answers to somebody else, so does the town planner, and the issue with, whereas the people, the health director, the economic development director, the HR director, they have other people under them, just like the town clerk does. And the town clerk, as Counsel Ryan mentioned earlier, is basically the only remaining elected official who's not up here on the council and the school committee, with a couple of other, couple of exceptions. That's the only officer, the only department director that is still currently elected, which really doesn't have anything to do with whether or not this person deserves to be on, this job description, rather, deserves to be on the A9 category, but I think it does warrant the same thing that the people that are currently in the A9 category do have, because they are overseeing other people. That's one of the reasons why I thought it was a good idea. And if you look at the, the specific dollar values that the MS18 here sets up, the end, the step five is 318365, and the grand total salary range runs 68,80221 to 83,09327, and the, the A9 category is, starts off at step one, it's 32,6461, and the range is 85,206 to 95,505 and change.
Lazo?
I said it at the moment.
Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Lazo?
I just, Counsel Jovan is, I seem to see the light through what he's seeing, when you say that some department heads don't have people under them and some have people under them. I know when we did a compensation pay plan, we would look at how many people they had to manage. If you have more under you, then you're managing more people. If you have less people under you, you're managing less people. So for myself, and this has nothing to do with the person, if there's one thing Counsel Jovan and I have learned through being on school committee and stuff, you're talking about a position, you're not talking about a person. I really respect the sales pitch on the loving clerk that we have, and I agree with it. But I think when you look at the position, you take the person out of it, because she could leave tomorrow, not saying she will, and then all of a sudden, where are you? So let's talk to the position. I, I'm not sure I'm going to support this, I really think this needs further study, along with the rest of the pay plan, not just pluck one out because one said, "I need more money." That's not how it works. It never worked that way in my world, when I served in other offices. We really look at it holistically and then tackle it before budget, not in the middle of budget stream. This is where the money gets thrown from one place to another, and I say, "Why did my taxes go up?" Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one of those cases where I actually agree with Counsel Ryan and Counsel Steves, because Ms. Bonadie's is an elected official, she's, she really is an administrative, in an administrative position. I also look at the difference, and it's, it's like, what, .01% difference, so I don't really think it's that big of a change, so as an elected person, administrator, she oversees that department, she oversees the elections division, and so I have to agree with them on this one. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. This requires a two-thirds vote of the council.
Roll call, please.
Absolutely.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
No.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Motion fails to get six votes, the motion fails. Next hold was on council reserve. Counsel Marquetti, I believe.
Oh, thank you. I actually, just to back up for a minute, I also was looking at the town attorney and the human resources department, I didn't say a hold, kind of was going too fast, and I was, you know, I'm a senior citizen, so I was trying to catch up. But the thing that I, I was looking at the town attorney, and I believe the town attorney has resigned, and if you want to keep the funds there, then okay, but I just don't know why we're keeping the funds there when we could certainly, if we need an attorney for some reason, then we hire attorney as needed. I just, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying I'm not sure we need a full-time town attorney, and that's why I put a call on it, but I was just looking at that as an option, I'm not making a proposal, I'm just looking at it as an option.
I just...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Counsel Jovan.
Oh, through you. That's just a line item for legal services, it's not a position of a town attorney, that's for all legal services for the year, when it says town attorney, it's for all legal services throughout the year, whatever we use, that just says town attorney, but it's not the retainer for it.
Seventeen thousand five hundred for the town attorney?
Hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred.
No, I'm looking at just the town attorney, maybe I'm on the wrong line.
Oh, I thought, well, town attorney is 117,500.
Okay, I'm on the wrong line then, sorry. I'm on the wrong line, I'll withdraw my hold, thank you.
You're withdrawing the hold for the council reserve?
Council reserves was one that I was looking at, because I can't remember us ever spending $100,000, ever, I mean, I, I know, I've been on the council for three years, and I think this year we're down to about 40,000 left over, so I can't imagine that we need 100,000 every single year, so I was, I was taking a look at it and questioning, maybe we could trim that a little. That was my only, looking at that as an option on the council reserve. Overall, you know, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to look at this, this budget and say, "Look, right, right now we're in the middle of a runaway inflation, so I think it's a good, good idea to try and hold the line on some of these positions and increases." And council reserve was one of them that I was looking at. Do you want me just to do all of them, or do you want to?
Just, just council reserve at this point.
All right, so that's all I was looking at, maybe we could trim that by 25,000. Thank you.
Are you making a motion?
Well, I just want to hear what the counselors have to say first, if they're interested, I'll make the motion.
Very good. Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just from my experience in the last eight years, I would think that, we probably could afford to cut some of it, actually. I want to say the peak that I recall was somewhere around 80,000 that we used at one point, and it usually ends up, we usually end up putting some money back into it during the course of the year, in most cases, like, like we've seen this year. I don't know if you have exact figures there, Karen, because that's the, that's the number, the peak that I recall, somewhere around there, over a few years ago.
Through the chair, what, can you repeat that again?
Town council reserve, as I recall, I think the peak we've spent in one year was around 80,000 out of that account.
How much to?
Eighty thousand, roughly.
Eighty thousand. I, I think we've come close in some years, it really depends, like, say, for example, in the years past, we've gone to the council reserve for veterans' benefits, if we have additional veterans that are added on to the list during the year, we may, we may need to go to that. This year, we went there for the motor vehicle fuel and lubricants. It's really that during COVID, I think we may have gone there for, for some money too, so I don't really feel like 100,000 is really all that large on a, on a budget of 64 million, and it's good to have some money to be able to access and go to within the budget to the town council. But I don't have the exact numbers with me, I'm sorry.
Very good. Lazo?
Oh, yeah, I guess, if there's, if there's no support from the counselors, then I won't make the motion, but, but I just don't feel that we need that much money in council reserves. Like I said, I'm just trying to get the, the amounts a little, at least look at a little bit of a moderate, modest cuts here in the overall budget. Thank you.
Well, as I said, I have no problem with bringing it down to like 80,000 if anybody wants, I'll make that motion. We have a second.
Okay. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to reduce the amount of the council reserve from 100,000 to 80,000. Is there further discussion? Very well.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Counsel Dow?
No.
Counsel Jovan?
No.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel?
No. Motion fails. I believe the next hold was the police budget of $4,771,959.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, again, I'm just trying to try, hold some of the increases here, modest increases, and when I, when I say that I'm trying to make some, some, give some options here, I'm not actually asking for a cut, I'm just trying to slow down the increase. And one of the options I was looking at was, I think the police chief wants two patrolmen, and an option that I, I put out there was just one patrolman. I was also looking at, well, we'll take it, you want to take it one at a time, we'll take it one at a time, but I, I kind of had it set up as an option with several positions here, to look at reducing the tax levy. For instance, the firemen want four firemen, I was looking at an option of offering them two firemen. Again, I'm not, I'm not cutting it, I'm just trying to stop the growth. The DPW wanted two employees, I was considering an option of just one employee and cutting out the engineer. The veterans department, I'm not, I'm not recommending cutting his salary, but I do know that we get reimbursed from other towns for veterans, so if you add all these, which was about 67,000, so if you add all these up, you're, you're cutting out about 243,000... up, you're, you're cutting out about two hundred and forty-three thousand, which the new tax levy would be only a 2.5% increase instead of a 3.5. So that was some of the options that I was looking at, and if you wanted to add some free cash or stabilization, you could get it down to almost level funded, but I know that usually it's the counselors don't want to use stabilization or free cash. However, other communities do use it, as long as you don't deplete it. So that's also an option that I was looking at. So the first one was, I'm willing to give the police chief his, his one patrolman, and that would be my first consideration.
Mr.? Are you making a motion of some sort?
I'll make a motion if somebody wants a second.
Can I just make a point of clarification, because?
Second point of discussion?
I, yeah, no, because I chaired the PPP subcommittee, just so I can bring dialogue of what, there was no request, we didn't vote for two patrolmen. The chiefs came in, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
The chief came in before us, and we all agreed that the one position, the dialogue was, the chief was looking for authorization for a fortieth position, but not necessarily funded this year, so that he could participate in hiring people, because we've had this issue of perpetual vacancies in the department, through no fault of the chief or the department, just the hiring process. So, we're looking to, and the question was, could we authorize forty positions but fund thirty-nine for this year on the budget? So there was, the recommendation from PPP through, through the PPP subcommittee to the town manager was to take a look at that, fund the thirty-ninth position, because it is desperately needed in the town, we do need, know that our police department is, is taxed, but could we authorize forty positions so that the hiring process and that, I'll defer to the chief if he wants to explain more, but there was no recommendation for, for two additional funded positions. It was just one funded position and an authorization for a second position only. And we were thinking of, could we do that, was it possible to do that, how would that work? Would it be legal for us to do it and not fund it? So, that was a conversation at PPP. So it was, the chiefs, the recommendation from PPP was fund one new position and look at the authorization of the second position, but not funded, so.
Very good. Discussion, Counsel Lazo?
I was fully understood in the beginning of this process that it was going to be a level serviced budget. A level serviced budget means no extra bodies. I know we brought up the, the DPW, we needed somebody, an extra set of eyes and ears, which was an inspector. Now it's an assistant engineer. This is the way it works in government. It, it's, it starts out as a great idea, and suggestions get into the pool, and then it comes out, and, and it's not what I personally thought it should be, but if the council feels fit, they'll do it. But I, I was, I'm voting on a, a level serviced budget, and this is not a level serviced budget by any means. Thank you.
Counsel Steve?
I mean, just a simple clarification, what the, what the DPW committee voted on was not an engineer, an assistant engineer, it was an engineering assistant. We weren't, we weren't talking, this person doesn't actually need to be an engineer. They might be preferred to be an engineer, and that's, the described prescription says that that would be beneficial, but it is not, doesn't have to be an engineer if the person is qualified to do the job that we need them to do. And the other thing I wanted to point out, since I have the floor, is, if I can ask through you, I don't know, I don't remember if I raised this when we were in the meeting, but if I could ask through you to Shane, since he's here. One of the things I actually marked in my budget book was overtime, and you were asking for a hundred and forty-five grand, but so far this year, as of when we got this, you'd spent sixty-three, and previous for 2021 was a maximum of fifty-six-four. And I was just wondering if, if, I was thinking if it would be possible to cut it to seventy-five grand for the following, for this coming fiscal year.
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, the overtime will be well overspent this year, we're only in May. We've got a lot of issues right now, a lot of people out on FMLA, which I cannot get into, another officer leaving, so that money will be depleted prior to June 30th.
It will be, okay.
We have a long way to go.
Okay.
To get there.
Thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
The question, seeing the assistant engineer instead of, instead of an inspector, were two different animals to me. It starts out a certain thing, it ends up being something else, and then, when it goes with the funding, it happens the same way. We all have our vote up here, we vote our conscience the best we can, and I just thought that if we're looking for, originally it started as a part-time inspector, South Street job, West Street job, and now it's going to evolve, and who knows, it might be driving a plow truck in the end. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Marquetti?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The point of the, the discussion is not the, the description of the position, but trying to trim the budget a little bit. That was my point. I think the budget is quite high this year, trying to keep taxes low. People are paying a lot of money for gasoline and food and rent, so we want to try and keep our rent, we want to keep our taxes as level as we can, especially with the other expenses that'll be coming up later on this year. So that was the point of my suggestion, that we take a look at some of these positions. I was under the impression that we were hiring two. We're only hiring one, then a third option would just to be, to leave that in. I'm still willing to give the firemen two positions, not four. And again, the veteran, we are getting reimbursed for that veteran's position, so some of that could come off. And if you saw, if you take a look at just that, then you're down to a 3% increase. And 3%, you know, if you start getting down to a 2%, 3%, then it's a modest, modest increase in, in the budget, and then I don't have such a problem with it. But we are, we are putting, doing a lot of increases this year and hiring a lot of people, and we've hired a whole HR department. I'm not saying it wasn't needed, I'm just saying we have done a lot of hiring this year. And at some point, we have to take a look at trimming it a little bit, just a modest trim is all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Ms. Honaway?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment through you, if I could, to Counsel Marquetti, the offset from the other towns for the veterans' agent is budgeted as local receipts. So even though it's not mentioned in there, which I will put in for next year, it already is in the revenue side of the budget. And the second one, if I would, just wanted to ask, too, could we maybe just keep to one department at a time? I think it makes it a little easier, if we could. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Any other comments? I'm sorry, that's right about the police budget. Mr. Manager?
Just a clarification slash comment. The positions that Mr. Marquetti referenced with the HR, a lot of those were funded by not filling other positions last year in recon, moving them around, some positions downstairs in the treasurer's office, we didn't fill an executive director's position in economic development. So, when we looked at filling those, we were using monies from other areas. But to Counsel Lazo's point and Counselor Marquetti's point, we did start with a level services budget, but then trying to be responsive to some of the comments that came up about oversight, public safety, having the conversations with the department heads, that's how these other positions came into being. So it's just a general comment, because there was a lot of discussion there about the various departments, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mary, could you read the motion again?
What, what was the motion?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. Chief, would you like to address?
If I could, Mr. Jay, just looking for clarification before we vote on anything for the police side of the House, anyway. At the PPP, they had approved or recommended to come to full council a thirty-ninth police officer. Right now, we're budgeted for thirty-eight, we actively have thirty-six working. In the last two years, we've had budget for thirty-eight police officers, and the last two years, we've fluctuated between thirty-four and thirty-six police officers actually working. The two that we hired several months ago, the next available academy was just confirmed on Thursday, it's not till mid-July, which means we won't see them on the streets of South, but still January. So what I'm asking is, maintain the budget that I submitted during PPP for the thirty-ninth police officer, but be authorized to move, to proceed with forty police officers. I don't believe that I'll ever get to forty police officers, but this makes it, it just simplifies the process of hiring, which can take between six months and a year. We have a police officer leaving on June 1st, I have another police officer leaving in the fall, so the two that start the academy in thirty-six, essentially, it don't get out until January, will not be on the streets to replace and backfill these two that are leaving, it's just a constant shell game, for lack of a better way to put it, where I'm just trying to fill, fill holes to provide adequate public safety. If we're authorized to hire forty police officers, budgeted for thirty-nine, that allows me to call for civil service lists, to get bodies in, moving, to get recruits moving through the door, go through physical fitness tests, medical, psychological, again, this stuff takes between six months to a year. So I'm not saying I'll ever have forty full-time police officers being paid by the community at any one time. If this vote's approved tonight, it would be thirty-nine full-time police officers. If at any point that's going to change, you'll have plenty of notice, because I'll come to subcommittee and elaborate on why that's changed. So all I'm looking for is some clarification on, am I authorized to have a forty-man police department, man, woman police department, with thirty-nine budgeted position, or that, is that off the table? I'm just looking for clarification on this vote tonight, and I'm not sure if this is proper, or the correct way to do it, but I figure I would ask since I'm here.
Counsel Lazo?
This is a budget format. To me, I was, I would be under the impression that you could create the position and not fund it. We had a position of assistant chief in the fire department for a decade, and it was never funded, because the budget funds it. The creation of the position just happens in subcommittee to council. If you voted in the budget, then it's budgeted, but creating the position is one thing, funding it is the second part of it. That's why on your, your, some of your agenda items ahead, is a creation of a step increase to something, and then there's the creation of the financing of it. So I think this year, I, I don't have a problem with the concept of what he's talking about, you know, having that fortieth ghost not funded, but it gives him the ability to constantly be moving, to fill, fill, moving parts to fill the hole, as he says. So I think, you know, whether we do the, the fortieth person after budget or before, you know, if it's not budgeted, I was under the impression that these are all budgeted because they're in the budget.
Yeah.
All set? Counsel? Counsel Lazo? Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Great.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Counsel Jovan?
Yeah, through you to Counsel Lazo. Yeah, I think when we had a PPP, we just wanted to bring it to the full council to get a sense of where we were going to go on it, as far as how it worked in a budget as well, because I think the concept, I think we're all in agreement for hiring purposes, so it was just, how, how does that fit into the adoption of the budget? We felt that it should come up to full council for debate on, on that, and what the procedure would be at that point, because we're unclear of how to proceed through the budget talks.
Counsel Lazo?
Well, what we would do is, I mean, if it wasn't in the budget today, I would bring it in front of PPP to create the fortieth officer's position, but not fund it. Period. You know, we're talking about funding positions if we get grants, funding positions if we, you know, certain things happen, contingent on things happening, and so isn't that fortieth officer. So whether it's in, I would rather have seen that happen separate from the budget, create it, create the position and not fund it. Thank you.
Counsel Steve and then Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. Yeah, as I recalled during the course of the discussion, that, what, we, we did talk about that, but I don't think we actually made a formal vote to create any position, and there certainly is no fortieth position in the budget, even without, with a zero next to it. And honestly, I'm not quite sure how exactly we go about doing that, I mean, do we need a, like a, because I can say, I can understand your total argument about, about it being separate from the budget process, because it is. How do, how exactly do we go about doing that? We would just, just make a motion to say that we're going to?
Yep.
And that we do? And then, so, but is it, is it appropriate to do it here as a separate item from the budget issue? Just as part of the discussion, we move to create the fortieth position, but we only fund it the way we have got it listed in the budget?
Mr. Chairman?
For clarification.
If you, if you create the thing tonight, and the budget number only is thirty-nine, you can do it. But the thing is, I thought it would be a clean operation if you created the position with a single vote at PPP, come to council, and then do the thirty-ninth position, or fortieth position unfunded.
Yeah, and that makes sense, I can, I can.
And don't get me wrong, if there's some grant or stuff happens, you have, it's there to be utilized. But I think what he's explaining is the hiring process with the academy and all the things you have to go through. And if you lose somebody and you have to train somebody, it's a big time period we don't have that officer on the street.
Yeah, I get that.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. I would, I would feel more comfortable taking it out if we're going to have this discussion, because I would, one, I would want this posted properly on the agenda that we're going to be discussing adding a fortieth person, instead of it coming up during the sake of discussion. You know, I think the public needs to have an understanding that that's what we're going to be doing, and that may not be the case. I wholeheartedly agree with you, I think we should be up to that number. But I think we need to do it properly, we need to go through the proper process, and I would recommend, I would move that we send that issue back to PPP for discussion.
The fortieth position?
The fortieth position, but unfunded.
All set? Counsel Jovan?
Thank you, through you. First off, the fortieth position was part of a general budget conversation, which was duly posted, so it was part of the budget presentation, and it was a request of the chief for us to consider that, so it was part of his budget presentation. And that's why it didn't get voted on, the fortieth position specifically, because of the process. And again, council, council's role in the budget process, you need two-thirds vote to add to the town manager's budget, so it was not part of the town manager's budget, so that's why it got thrown up to the full council for debate, because of the fact that the, only the council on a two-thirds vote can increase the town manager's recommendation. So his recommendation was thirty-nine police officers, we had the general conversation about adding this fortieth unfunded position, so the debate got kicked up to council on the budget, because the only people that, of the council at two-thirds vote can add to that budget, so that's why it came up that way. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Dow? You're all set? Very good.
Well, I guess, if I might, I guess I withdraw the motion then, because from what I understood, it was a fortieth police officer, so if that's not what it is, then I'll withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Very good.
I don't know if you need a second on that to withdraw.
All set? Okay. All right, so we all set with the police budget?
So, it's going to go back to PPP.
All set? Very good. Okay, the second, next hold was the fire budget at two million eight hundred and seven thousand thirteen dollars.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is the one where they were asking for four firemen, I'm willing to give them two firemen, that's two additional firemen, so I'm not making a huge cut here, I'm just asking for a modest increase instead of what I consider a lot here. And I also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at the meeting, the, the discussion was that if they don't get the safer grant, you're going to fund the positions anyway. That's the discussion that I recall. So if that's the case, then it's going to be, it's going to be twice that amount. Correct? Am I correct?
Yeah.
Mr. Manager?
Well, I was going to defer to Counsel Jovan, but we have submitted for the safer grant, which would allow us to fund four positions over several years, I believe three, and in the fourth year, we would have to take on the responsibility for those, and we would get money during those four years on a sliding scale to fund those positions. Now, if, in theory, we had received this grant the first time we applied, at this point in time, we would have, we would find ourselves in a position having to fund the four of them. So, that's, and this is my understanding and part of the rationale talking with the chief. We've tried repeatedly to get this grant, and at some point in time, as I said, had we got it, we would, we would then own them at the end of the grant. So, if we don't get it this time, the chief is asking that we begin to fund them, and we won't know till about halfway through the fiscal year. That is why he has asked for only a half a year's funding for those four firefighters. And the reason why it is, he's asking for four is because we run 24-hour shifts, so to get an additional man or woman on the complement of firefighters that we have now, we run essentially six on a shift. That's what we try to, but from time to time, we have five or even four. He's trying to put an additional person on, so that we have someone out there to assist when we have to go to Worcester for the ambulance, so that there's an extra body, if you will. That's why you need four to accommodate the rotations on the 24-hour shift. I would have to defer to the, the chief what would happen if he... I would have to defer to the, the chief what would happen if you were to amend this to two, but to clarify, the thought process would, is that had we previously been approved at this stage in the game, we would be looking at funding those four positions. So if the town was willing to go forward and pursue the safer grant as we have in the past, we would at some point have to own those four firefighters.
Very good. Uh, Counsel Jovan.
Uh, no, the town manager answered, uh, just through PPP subcommittee, there was dialogue, it was reported favorably, three-nothing to come up to full council. The only comment that I made at that meeting was that the, in the budget, it should be taken out, that it's not safer grant, because this was actual posi, my understanding were these are actual positions, unless I was mistaken on the presentation, it was because of the absence of not getting the safer grant, and the possibility that we may not because of the reduced funding on the federal level, and our goal and the need for the Fire Department was to remove the name Safer out of it, but because these were actually funded positions out of the operating budget, not grant positions. So going forward, this would be four positions in the Fire Department, fully funded by the town. However, it was a half a year of funding, based on the hiring and all that. So that was my understanding, I'll let the chief, if he wants to elaborate on that, but that was the conversation at PPP.
Chief.
Did you have anybody else?
Well, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you. Actually, I'd rather let the chief talk, and then I'll, I'll follow up afterwards.
So, yes, that, that change will be made, Counsel Jovan, in regards to the title of those, you know, as the positions morph into a positive vote tonight for four people, I hope. Obviously, over the last four years, we've been giving you a, a ton of statistics. The reason why we need four, I said my first year here as the Fire Chief, I think we need eight. The safer grant did not allow us to go for, for eight, because I think, as the town manager eloquently proposed my pitch, is that basically if we went for eight the first time around, the town would have had to come up with about $800,000, just to keep those, those eight guys on. So the first year, we did do four, four firefighters. Again, this would be, this past year is, again, four more firefighters. I have reached out to several legislators, got support letters, gave a nice little presentation during General Government Budget, PPP Proposal Meeting, and it just, you know, it's, I've been saying that the increasing residential people that are coming in here, I can tell you right now, Eighty Marcy Street, over the last seven or eight weeks that it's been open, we've been there six times. I recommended in, in the presentation when I said it, is that we can probably, just on that property alone, and also the properties that are going to be over on K Street, our call volume keeps going up and up and up, and it's just very discouraging. I do know a few counselors at the end of PPP or during PPP said that, you know, public safety shouldn't be raising money to keep staff on. We do make some money with the ambulance receipts, we do keep very, very good track of those. Ms. Harnoyes does a great job every year, we put together our thoughts and ideas. I will still really support the four firefighters moving forward tonight. If we do two, as some counselors have mentioned, that's only fixing half of the problem. That's only, as, as we said, it's four groups of six, and if we go to four groups, I mean, two groups with seven, you're only collecting or getting, or covering half of the department. Seven is a number that works for us right now, I've shown the statistics about where, what revenues we've lost, and I keep going back to revenues. And it, it is what we do, is we do collect money for doing the ambulance service, but, you know, it is, it is a business, and I think it's still important to, to keep the citizens safe with the amount, with the appropriate amount of personnel. And that's right now going with four firefighters, and if anybody has any questions, please.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the chief. How often is the station left unmanned, because you all are responding to calls?
So, uh, right, I don't have those statistics right in front of me, but I think at the, we, we do recalls, and the, the data behind that, I don't want to put numbers, you know, come out of my mouth, but very often, it, it's unmanned with all six members, either, either on vacation, sick time, or all on calls. I can get those numbers for you and forward them. Those are monthly stats that I push out all the time.
Yeah, uh, that would be awesome, actually. And the other question I had was, how many, I'm sure you know this number, how often are we losing calls to mutual aid because we don't have the staff?
So the last presentation, we had sixty-eight calls from July first last year to the present, which was April twenty-third, so about sixty calls. Previous years, it's actually been more, but at this point, we, we're trying to do a good majority of our own calls. I will say, on the other hand, because of staffing issues in other towns, we have been picking up more calls than those other towns. We have almost doubled our, our call volume to Sturbridge, as we talk right now. So when, when they can't staff, they call us, so it's kind of like a round, a round robin, a circle that keeps going around and around and around. And unfortunately, it's very hard to tell when an emergency ambulance call is going to come in. There's been times that, there's been no ambulances in a general geographical area, because everybody's been busy. Kind of sad, but that's the world that we're in right now.
Thank you. I, I'm going to fully support the four positions as is outlined, because it's needed. Why, I don't understand the rationale to, given that services to other communities, or leaving a place unmanned because we're having to respond to the emergencies that are happening. If our town's growing, our department needs to grow with it, and you make very valid points. The amount of residences that we're seeing are increasing, and they're only going to continue to increase as we add more rental units into the place, into the community. So adding these four positions is sorely needed, you're right, you guys have been understaffed for a very long time, and this will help bring you to at least a healthier place, not a fully staffed place, because I still think you guys need a little bit more, but it'll bring you to a more healthier place to respond to the way the community is changing. So I appreciate the work you did on this, and I thank you, Mr. Chief.
Counsel Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm going to say something, probably not many people is going to like it. I think we went through that before plenty of time, before enough of the subcommittee. We agree on four, we agree on the police, the DPW, and now we're here in front of the camera, trying to, I don't know what we're doing. Like, we already talked about it, we already went to the meeting, we already agree on a lot of things, and now here, and now here, we're trying to say, oh, why you need it, why, yeah, you do need it. You have, how many new apartments coming in? Fifty here and?
Fifty, one hundred and twenty-seven.
Plus, it's coming.
Plus another one.
When, when we have an accident, why the Fire Department is not here yet? Why the ambulance is not here yet? That's why, because he doesn't have enough staff. Same thing like the police, same thing like the DPW. They're cleaning the whole town, they need to sweep the road, they need to cut the grass, they need to pick up people's trash after laughter on the sidewalk, they need to, I mean, I, I'm not trying to waste people's money, but we need it, the town need it, the town, they need a lot of improvement, and if we don't keep supporting those departments, I don't think we need to, we're not going to get anywhere. So I think we should vote on what they're asking for. I don't think they're asking for more guy to play basketball or volleyball at the police station or the Fire Department. They, they really need men to do the work. So, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Mike Hattie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm not up here trying to make speeches about anything. I'm, I'm up here because I'm a Southbridge taxpayer who's on a fixed income, and my taxes are pretty high. And I'm not trying to cut anybody's budget, I'm just trying to slow down the growth a little bit, that's all I'm doing. So no, I don't come here to make speeches. I come here to try and keep my taxes down, that's all I'm doing. And when some of you start paying property taxes, then you can lecture me about how we got to pay for everything. So that's all I'm doing. Thank you.
Can I, can I respond?
Uh, Counsel Steve, then Counsel Al.
Just to remind you, all of us are citizens, and many of us are property taxpayers. I'm just as much a, a limited tax, unlimited income as you are. Okay? And I think many of the people who are watching out there are in the same boat that many of us are in. You know, not, nobody here is super wealthy, we're not rolling in money, none of us are. And we're all paying taxes, and all of us see the tax bills, and none of us are happy about tax bills. But there is a huge difference between paying taxes and seeing that we're getting something for the taxes, and having it just be frittered away. And I think we're trying to do as much as we possibly can to make sure that what we are seeing in the public services is what this community needs to have. Nobody's wanting, nobody's trying to give us a lot of extra frittery and stuff in the fire or police departments or schools or any of these other things. None of us want to see taxes get, go through the roof. But we are trying to make sure that the services that our community has to have get met. That's what we're trying, that's what we're here for.
Counsel Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Nobody pays tax more than I am right here, right now. I pay a lot of tax in this town, and, and I think a lot of people know that. But the town, they need improvement. I don't want to raise tax on me, never mind their residents. But if we don't do that, how are you going to take care of the residents if they get sick, or if it's a problem, or if you need to clean the town? We keep saying the same thing. Every council come up here or running for election. I don't want to raise the tax on the residents, I want to keep the tax low. No. How are you going to do the cleanup? How are you going to pick up the trash? How are you going to support the public safety? I'm not going to pay from my pocket, you're not going to pay from your pocket, we have to put slowly on a, on a, on a tax, on, you know, everybody understand that. Nobody anymore believe like, oh, I'm not going to raise tax because, no, we have to raise tax. Where we going to get the money from? When we have money before, from certain places, we sit down and we, we don't know what we did with it. I wasn't here at that time. And now, because we don't have any more income coming, we have to raise the tax to be able to fix what we're asking, or what this chief and chief and DPW asking for, and other department. I mean, enough is enough, time to move on and fix the town, and make the residents happy, look around us, all this town, beautiful road, beautiful residence, everything is beautiful. Southbridge was, I lived twenty-three year here, before, when I came here, it used to be the best town in the area, and look where we are now, because we keep the same attitude. We don't want to raise tax because we don't want to do this, we don't, no, we have to, we have to fix the town. You raise tax, everything will get better. I understand some elderly, they can't afford it, living on certain budget, that's something we can look in the future, how we're going to help these elderly people. Other than that, we have to move on, life is going to continue. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
I think, but, go ahead. The reason why we're here is accountability and oversight. After my, my good friend here, Mr. Counselor, has his opinion on spend more money, spend more money, spend more money, tax, tax, tax. Okay, do you know what we've been doing the last three years? Spending money, spending money, tax, tax, tax. The, the art of government is getting it done bang for the buck. In other words, when my chief tells me that he's got to do calls to Sturbridge and Webster, I really don't, I don't live in Webster and Sturbridge. I don't care if you make a call there. I care about the Southbridge residents. And I lived a tragic moment with an ambulance, because our ambulances were all out of town. We couldn't have the ambulance for a Southbridge resident. Maybe we need to rethink how we do business from the top down, and maybe it'll be cheaper to run that way. We've had stuff happen to us by a forestry truck, I remember that, brand-new Ford, F450. We're going to get rid of the old Chevy, it's nineteen sixty-six, it's a junk. That nineteen sixty-six truck is still in the bay, and we're building a fire station to house it. So, you know, and I'm not mad at our chiefs. I want our chiefs to come up here and ask for the sky. It's their job to try and push the hard budget, but it's not our job to roll over and tax the hell out of our citizens and not look for creative ways. I lived in this town when it was the all-American city, and it wasn't known as Taxachusetts, it was a conservative community. Yeah, they spent money very frugally, they'd argue over a P.O. box for the police chief. Now, he can own the post office, it's all right, he's a good guy, that's why we vote some stuff through, good guy. Think about what you're doing tonight. Vote your conscience. Guys, let me tell you something, what we do here tonight is going to be my conscience. And, and I don't fall to political pressure, or campaigns, or the unions, or any of that, never did, never will, wasn't my mode of operation. Tonight, you vote your conscience. If you really believe it, I respect his passion for what he wants to do. I might have a different opinion. I don't dislike the gentleman, he's a good friend of mine, we just have different viewpoints. So moving forward, I want that chief to ask for what he's asking for, and I'm going to vote my conscience, that's what we have to do. Because when someone says we have to have it, sometimes we have to have things, and sometimes are nice-to-have things. And what I've learned about department heads, if they can get the nice-to-have, and not just a have-to-have, I don't blame them for getting it. So moving forward, this council can debate, it can disagree, it can vote, and then your ballot will make, will be the judgment day, and vote us in or out. So right now, I mean, the debate is, is healthy, it's spirited, I miss Counsel Adams, he's a very passionate guy on this, and I, I know he's watching, wish you were here. But I thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I think we got to focus on, if we have to discuss it ten times, that's not a bad thing. Good discussion is healthy. Whether we did it at subcommittee, and we have to do it up here. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan, my apologies.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I just have to make a comment on this, because this aside was made yet again, and I, I can't let it go unanswered anymore. I'm so sick and tired of people saying that people who don't own property don't pay taxes. When taxes go up, my rent goes up. Have you been looking at all the prices of rental units? I could afford a mortgage cheaper than I'm paying for rent from the record. I am tired of that argument being made, when a huge portion of our community, our people are rent. Do they not have voices? Do they not matter? Can they not speak up about the way our town is spending money? Yes, they can. And I'm so sick and tired of that being used as a political attack against those who don't own property. Deal with it, Counselor, we're here.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, through you. Counsel Lazo is correct, debate is, is healthy, and this is where we get to debate, because what's going to happen, and I won't be on council next year, because I'll be done, when we, when you as a council go and vote for the tax rate, you're going to say, why is the tax rate so high? It's high because every decision you make is done here tonight. So that's the healthy debate, to make sure that we get it right here, and not then try to debate in December why the tax rate is so high, and how can we cut the tax rate. This is where we essentially set the tax rate, is by the decisions we make as a council for our community. This is a tough one to struggle with, because when I came on council four years ago, the first item that I tried to lead the charge on was the Fire Department, the leadership at the Fire Department, how we could make the Fire Department a strong entity because of some of the issues that were going on. And we did work very hard with the current chief to try to push through that safer grant. And I'm proud of the council for thinking about trying to get that safer grant approved. Why we can't get that safer grant, because we certainly show the need, we certainly show the call volume, it's just not coming to the town of Southbridge. So now, as council, I have to sit here and say, we've demonstrated from our votes on council that we needed to do something with the Fire Department to increase the strength to make sure that our residents are protected and served. And our job is to balance the tax rate, as well as provide safe roads, good roads, good public safety, and improvement on our quality of education. And we've worked very hard over the, I know in my tenure over four years, to work at all those buckets and keeping the taxpayer in mind when we make those decisions. So now I sit here going, how am I going to vote on this? Because now I have to think as a taxpayer as well, and I do feel for Counsel Ryan on those rates. I don't know how people are affording rents in this community, and we're putting all this affordable housing up, and, and the rates are looking like, is it really affordable? Because those rents are still pretty, are pretty high. But we're going to attract residents, and we have to look at this in the lens of how our future's going to look. We have a facility going down, and because of the highway access, we don't get the benefits of the Amazon that's going up, this huge facility that will hire fifteen-hundred workers, this huge Walmart facility, all at the end of the road here. But what's going to happen is those individuals that do come to work there are going to look for the housing, and where do we have the cheapest housing? The town of Southbridge. So now, and we're adding housing units, and we're putting these properties in. So we have that to look for, and we have to protect those, law enforcement, fire, DPW. So now, and all we want, and because of, I have to say, because of my experience in public safety and paying attention to it, one- public safety and paying attention to it, one has to really look at the call volumes that go out to other towns and listen to other communities and follow what's happening in other communities. Every community is having an issue with fire, police protection and retention of employees because nobody wants to work these jobs anymore. For me today to look at the MMA website and see that the city of Framingham is looking for lateral transfers for their police department on civil service, if you would have told me that 30, 25, or 10 years ago, you would have thought you were crazy. But nobody wants those jobs. But we have to retract. So I look at this through the lens of, I want good quality services for my residents, but I want them to be safe and protected. And we do know, and into the changing of services. 10 years ago, the fire department made a quick trip on an ambulance, went to wherever they went in the town of Southbridge, dropped them off at Harrington, and they were back in the house within 15 minutes. And I know that from experience being in the EMT. It was a quick trip. Boom, boom, the old run, pick them up, go, drop off, come back. Those days are gone. Everything's to the city now. So those two firefighters and EMTs that used to take that half hour trip and were ready for recall into town of Southbridge because they could be doing paperwork at Harrington, and another call came in, boom, they were off, fill their paperwork later, now they're in the city of Worcester. So we have these challenges there. So that's why I do, it's tough for me to do it, but I do support it because I know what the need is. And to kick the can down the road, if, when we get a safer grant, if it's not happening and it hasn't happened, we now have to look at, and that was the challenge from the chief back then, four years ago, is if we don't get it, what are we going to do as a community? No different than the police chief in his department. You had a study done, how many years ago, that said that this police department should have been over 40 man department back then? And we kicked can round the road. So I support this. I think it's for the protection of the residents. And yes, Counsel Lazo is right. I have to vote my conscience. And my conscience is the protection of the citizens. And it hurts my wallet, I know that. And I know I'm struggling with this inflation. But also I want, when the resident picks up that phone and wants a firefighter or an EMT, that we provide that service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Counsel Mike Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one last thing. I remember Counsel Jovan, when you were the chairman of the committee, and I was a citizen. And I would come up here and I would say something about the taxes and you would say, "The time to talk about the taxes is during the budget." So I've been on the council for three years and every time the budget comes along and I say something about the budget, there's no will to do anything about the budget. So yes, I understand. I understand the needs. But I also think if you want something, you got to give something. So if they want to make some movement somewhere else, then fine, I'm all for it. But there's, there doesn't seem to be any movement. It's like, it's everything. They're getting everything this year. So, and you know, don't forget, it's not just property taxes. I pay a lot of taxes in this town, not just property. I pay excise, I pay water, I pay sewer. It's all going up. You go to fill up your gas tank, it's costing $100. It's got to end somewhere. It's, we've got to control it somehow. And all I'm asking is that we, rather than these huge increases, that we just have some modest increases. So, but I'll let it go for now. Thank you.
My fellow colleagues all correcting what they're saying. The thing that I want to bring to the table is, is when someone talks about, "I need four guys." Why do you need four guys? How many ambulance calls do you have? How much this, how much that? Maybe we shouldn't go to other towns. Let the ambulance services do the other towns. Cut our service back to the town of Southbridge. I throw that out there, whether you believe it or not, as an idea. I don't like following other towns. I like leading in this town. Be the example. Not, "I'm going to get online, find out what Framingham's doing because I think I want to be framing him." You know? And I think, I don't mind doing research on salaries to keep competitive and stuff. We do it all the time. But the thing is, when someone's going to do something in their department, you're building a building. You know, they've been kicked to the curb on three different occasions, now it's time to take care of the fire department building. How you deal with that creatively to get it under these numbers during this time is just like the ambulance service. Maybe we shouldn't provide the service to other towns. Maybe we should tighten it up. I give the council kudos. We've been on a roll with the fire department for four years, under the leadership of Jack Jovan. Yes, 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 yes. And it, the proof is there. The manpower is there. The equipment is there. Whatever we were working for, we understand public safety is very important. But when someone complains about their rent or their taxes, it all comes down to the cost of living. And if you think the cost of living is getting better because of everything else going on that you can't control, the one thing we can control is our tax rate. So when you look at anybody in the town of Southbridge, they pay more than just taxes. You know, you just look at the food bills, oil and gas and repairs. If, I don't know how some people are going to afford. He'll survive. I'll survive. A lot of guys up here will survive because we have businesses. I'll raise my prices and I'll get paid to do the job. But what about the person who doesn't have that ability to change that income so, "Don't worry about it, I can pay for those four." I'm representing the ones that can't pay for the four. I'm not, my, me, I put the four on and, you know, I can, I can handle it. It'll be tough, but we do it. So going forward, we need to just get creative in how we do business in a lot of ways. Maybe why don't we lean on mutual aid a little more? You know, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a firefighter. During the years, I yield to the chief, both chiefs and the department heads, but I'm up here to make a decision on common sense approach. And, you know, tonight, I'm not supporting the four guys. I, because I came here and I thought we're going to get a level service budget. Adding four guys is not a level service. Okay? So don't call this level service. Call it the budget, vote your conscience, but don't call it level service. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Could you, could you just, before the chief goes, do we actually have a motion on the floor or we, I don't know, I'm not clear what the motion was? Because the budget supports four firefighters before the chief. I just want to make sure that we don't waste any more time for the chief or anybody else that, is there an actual motion on the floor to reduce this and was there a second and where we're at? But I defer to the chief, but I just want to know where we're going on this because this conversation is just circling.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to cut it to two.
There's no second. Very good. Chief, you wish to speak?
Just very quick. I know this has gone long enough. I have the stats that I was giving, said I didn't have, they were in my book. Just for a five month period for the station recall, November to March of '22, 150 times we went out for recall to bring us back to the number of four that we have as a minimum. 54 times we were below the number of four for recall. So our staff was not coming back to bring us back to that minimum number of four. So 54 times that's happened.
You've got five months.
That's only five months.
Five months?
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to be that ambulance.
Thank you.
Very good. There being no motion, I believe we move on. To inspections, there's a hold on inspections. I believe Counsel Mike Hattie.
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
You're all set? You withdraw the hold?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. There's a hold on DPW. Counsel Mike Hattie.
So DPW, they're hiring two employees. One is a mechanic and one is assistant engineer. So I, I guess there's a need for an engineer or for a, for a mechanic.
It's not a mechanic, it's a maintenance man.
A maintenance man.
Equipment operator, it's our general position.
Pardon? Pardon?
It's a maintenance man, equipment operator, it's our general position, just a general.
I know that the council is asking for maybe someone to be a clerk of the works, but I don't recall it's asking for an assistant engineer. So my option would be to eliminate the engineer position tonight. And I'll make that in a motion so we can have a discussion. Thank you.
Second, let's just, Counsel. We have a motion and a second.
Can I address the, regarding what the second position? It is an assistant to the town engineer to provide oversight activities and assist in MS4 permit compliance. We are very, very far behind in doing our MS4 permit compliance. We don't have anybody physically able to do this right now because we are straight out. I know that council has been pushing for us to do more oversight of our projects. I think this is a good marrying of the two needs in the department from a technical basis. It is not an assistant engineer. It's an engineering, it's an assistant to the town engineer to perform those two functions. And that is the way it's written up in the job description. And I think, like I said, like I was saying, we are very, very far behind in meeting our obligations for MS4 permitting, which requires us to inspect every single outfall, every single catch basin, every single pipe, to do investigations of every single system. So we're falling further and further behind in that task. And this person will be tasked with putting that program together and getting us up to date, along with inspecting all of our construction projects, which we have numerous ones and numerous projects for the national grid going currently.
Counsel Lazo. I have a couple of questions. In past years, we had the sewer plant come inspect sewer lines.
That's correct. We have a sewer.
Are we still doing that?
Sewer specs sewer lines, water inspects water lines. Nobody currently is tasked with doing the inspections of when they are repaving. So with the repaving, that is what this person will be doing. He will be inspecting when they're doing the actual construction, that they're backfilling properly and that they're paving properly. And that they're meeting the requirements of paving.
The spec on the, on the paving, do we still do coal patch for 30 days and then permanent pave to allow it to settle?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out that for several years running, this council has been discussing the idea of, of trying to do something to bulk up the DPW. And what we're, what we're seeing in this budget is actually a step in that direction. I mean, with this particular assistant to the town engineer, the way, the way the job description is written, this person will basically need to be cloned to do it already. But it's at least one more person that gets, that can help get some of the job done. I mean, seriously, I'd be very surprised if we get, we get, you know, two thirds of that done, but it would be two thirds that we're not getting done now. And we need these people, both between the everyday working people and this particular person, to do the jobs that we've been asking as this council, to get some of the stuff done that needs to be done, again, to get back to what our community needs to have. We can't keep letting these, like the issues we saw with Main Street and the project going on there. If we had somebody watching that on a regular basis, we might not have seen some of those issues. And instead, and said several of us, Counsel Mike Hattie, myself, a couple of others here, were actually, you know, tasked to go take a walk on that project and take a look at these things. And, you know, I can't say I know anything enough, enough about roadwork to, you know, to be able to comment on those things on any detail. But even, even I could see that there were issues going on. And if we have somebody seeing these projects who has some background, I don't care what the title actually is, to be honest with you, as long as the person has the skills that we need to do the job that we need to be done. And stop debating the word-wanking of titles because that doesn't matter. It's the person's job that matters. And meeting the needs of our community.
Anyone else? Counsel Jovan.
I'll defer to Counsel Ryan because I think she had her hand up first. I was, I was going to wait till the agenda, but I guess I'll bring it up now. We do have the job description, obviously, on the agenda tonight. And there was a number of changes made to that job description. Originally, it came and it was going to be an assistant engineer. And they went through, the committee recommended, or the members recommended changes. We postponed. HR and DPW came back with all those changes, including the title change to assistant to the town engineer, to reflect all that, all those concerns. It's something we've all talked about. You know, we always hear clerk of the works, a clerk of the works, a clerk of the works is what we need. Clerk of the works are usually engineers, as Heather has pointed out. So I, again, we're debating semantics when it's clear this person's going to be doing the oversight this council's been asking to provide. I, I just, we ask them as the sky up and they say, "Yes." And then, actually, "No, it's down." I, I don't understand this flip-flopping of all over the place of like, they're giving us what we've been asking for and providing more oversight and providing more bulk to DPW, which is desperately needed. Anybody who's gone and seen that knows there's not enough staff down there for the level of work that's happening in this town. And even when they're giving us something, after Heather did initially push back and say, "No, maybe we don't need that name." She caved in and said, "You know what? Maybe we do need it." Accepted the council position. And here we still are, fighting her on it. Give her the oversight position, we need it. We all have expressed the desire to need it. Leave it in the budget as is. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Through You. Counsel Ryan is correct. I think for the last three years, we've heard about accountability oversight of the DP, in the DPW for additional bodies. And I think if I look back at the South Street project, we had a big conversation about hiring somebody just to oversee that project. We're paying for one project more than what this position's going to pay for an entire year for a whole multitude of other issues that we have to address in the town. And whether we like MS4 or not, which I'm going to say we don't, but the feds aren't going to let us off the hook. So if we're going to, Counsel Lazo, on the previous debate, talked about being forward-thinking and being the leader in, in the things that we do. This is a way for, I think, a community to be a leader in developing this MS4 position as well as the oversight in the other projects. So for me, I look, I had a hard time voting $95,000. It was 95,000, I think?
Eighty-five.
Oh, eighty-five? That was ninety-five. But eight, or even 85,000 for one project that we could have spent, on that project, $95,000 we did. $95,000 for one project where we could have got close to $100,000 worth of pavement. I think for all the projects that we have on the books, the things that we're looking to do, the things that need to be inspected, I think this is a position that we should support and evaluate in a year. If we, if we have a good quality person in this and we have some, some real benchmarks as to what we're going to develop on MS4, and then reevaluate the position and all the projects that we have going. So I thank the general government and the DPW director for making that change. I know there was a lot of dialogue about another engineer. So I think this is a great compromise as far as the oversight and how you incorporated the other issues that need to be addressed within a department, within a department of public works and the functions that have to go on. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
So Heather, from what I'm understanding, it doesn't have to be an engineer?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Mike Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Through You. Yes, I remember that vote on the South Street. And at the time, I did say, rather than hiring an engineer on South Street, why don't we hire a clerk of the works to watch these things or an in-house engineer? But the council voted to hire a private engineer on that project. So I also believe we had an engineering company overseeing Main Street, and yet look what happened with Main Street.
We, we didn't have a full-time oversight on Main Street.
We had oversight on Main Street though, and we still look at how it's, how it ended up. I also, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're probably going to hire, or we have hired somebody for West Street to oversee that project. So yes, I, I don't have a problem hiring someone as an oversight in Southbridge for DPW. But if councils kind of keep hiring people, private companies to oversee these projects, But if councils kind of keep hiring people, private companies to oversee these projects, then it's one or the other. And I'm trying to be physically, fiscally responsible here. And if you want to hire somebody, then fine, but show me, show me a cut somewhere else so we can justify all these new positions, instead of just giving everything they want. Show me some changes somewhere else, and then, then I would be okay with it. So, and as far as the, I don't really wanna get too much into the qualifications here, but it's got civil engineering all through this document, so to me, that's an engineer. Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
I just wanted to say that I actually agree with what Counsel Marquetti was just saying about, about eliminating the outside contractors, if we can do so. And I'm hoping that bringing these people in-house will allow us to do that. I mean, as we pointed out, the salary here for this person, $75,000, even if it does go up, and if we can get the kind of workload that we need to get done in-house, we can stop paying the extra money for the outside engineering contractors to oversee this project. That's the whole point of doing this. And that's what I hope happens, too.
Counsel Lozo.
So let me, let me understand this. We have a private engineer on the South Street project. We have a private engineer part of the contract on the West Street project. So why did we hire this person?
Okay, so let me clarify. Currently, we have full-time oversight on South Street. On Main Street, you only had part-time oversight. The reason we went to full-time oversight on South Street was because of the issues we had on Main Street. So we made a conscious decision that we wanted somebody there full-time to oversee. I have been making the argument that if you even hire one person to do oversight, they can't be on South Street, on West Street, on East Main Street, at the sewer plant, at the water plant, all at the same time. They can't run five projects as a full-time oversight. So you're gonna have to pick and choose your battles, plus oversee all our street openings, which I believe was over 100 already this year, and do anything on MS4. They physically can't be in every one of those places at once. So you're gonna have to pick and choose where you put full-time oversight and where you don't. We are currently just completing a project down at the wastewater treatment plant that we've had part-time oversight, and we've run it, and it's run very well. So it can be done where we have part-time oversight. So on big, critical infrastructure projects, I would recommend you still have the engineer that does, of record, do the full-time oversight. When you are doing your own paving projects, this person will be overseeing those projects. When your National Grid isn't working, they'll be checking on National Grid. This gives you that body in the field to check all of those things that you want, plus check on those projects periodically to make sure that they're occurring. Ken, if it runs really efficiently, and if the number of projects in this town decrease in the future, which I don't see happening, since you have East Main Street, Crane River, West Street, all in the pipeline, as you could say, on the books for design, plus all the other work, you know, there's a million dollars of paving work this summer. It'd be really nice to have that person on staff to be able to help oversee that work. That's a lot of paving to put down this summer and have done without anybody around to oversee it. So, yes, it's a balance. Maybe in the future, when projects are reduced and you don't have five projects, major projects going on at once, you'll be able to say, this person's gonna oversight, you know, 50% of the time is gonna be out on this project, and doing all the other tasks, all your other million dollars that you're still gonna do in paving at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, the problem I'm having is, we had five projects at one time, when Fantoni and Gioso, and everybody was in town doing pumping stations, sewer projects, sewer relining. We never had this problem. The Central Street parking lot was the first one that we, everybody knew in town, except our DPW, that do a paving in the rain.
That's not true.
Did you stop them?
Yes, I attempted to stop them. I ordered them to stop, and they didn't. Okay? So I didn't have oversight of that contract, so I didn't have any, any skin in the game to actually be able to stop them. I stood out there telling them to stop.
So what does this gentleman have that he's, what power does he have to stop anything? You are the department head, I think you would have the most weight.
It wasn't my contract.
Or the town engineer, which the gentleman below you would have been on that. The thing that comes back to us, Heather, is citizens do more inspecting than we do. They drive on the roads and they see what's going on, but doesn't seem to me that we know what's going on. And an inspector, I'm the guy brought up, the inspector I brought it up to try and get a retired inspector just to do a specific job, or, or, or some of the other ones that we have coming up. And yeah, we're gonna have a lot of work being done. It's not gonna all happen at one time. It's gonna take over five years to get all this stuff done. We saw what happened on Main Street just to do the job, never mind do it correctly. So I think South Street and West Street, you know, there's gonna be, those are gonna be our two big ones, and we have engineers on that project. It's usually not the local contractor that needs the inspection, because they're the guys that usually do the job right, on the laterals and stuff like that, because they're definitely afraid of losing their license. The big guys are the guys that, that, you know, they just do as they damn well please and deal with it later. So for me, I mean, we're gonna hire the position, and don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of the oversight. I'm in favor of the position. Doesn't have to be an engineer, to me. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm gonna be watching, going forward, because I will be on the council next year, that if this position doesn't pan out, it'll be one of the positions I'll ask to be cut. But I'm willing to support it. I'm willing to try it. This is one of the positions that I thought was gonna get created and before the budget and, and put into the budget, and I am gonna support it. But it, it's disheartening, is what it is, because I do know a little bit about what we do, and some of the bonehead moves that some of these companies made, and the irreparable companies, was amazing. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
You had a, I just wanna understand, when you say you need an engineer on each project.
You don't.
You don't?
You need some type of oversight on each project. You need somebody watching it. Some projects are more critical than others. South Street's a very critical project, very high-profile, that's all the water coming to our town, you know, part-time oversight on that project would have been a little bit hairy. You got two major water mains, you have sewer main in there, you wanted to make sure it went in flawlessly.
So.
West Street is probably going to be able to be done, it's up to the council. We are trying to react to what council wants. Right now, West Street only has part-time oversight. It does not have full-time oversight in the contract. The contract that you did put full-time oversight in is East Main Street. You voted that one, you voted the contract.
My question is, that person is gonna inspect when you put the new water pipe?
Yep.
That same person?
Yep.
He qualify?
Yep.
To do the inspecting for the sewer pipe?
Yep.
For the water pipe, for the pavement, for the impact, everything? So usually, when you do a project, because you issue that permit and you, you actually should be able to control, because the DPW, the head of the town, be able to control these projects. If, if we get one full-time person, I'm not sure, I'm just, you know, trying to understand myself. And this project today, they do on the water pipe and sewer, the other one doing the pavement. So you think that person have to sit all day?
No.
Wait for that company to run the water pipe? Or they can run it, at the time they're running that project, they can, he can go and inspect another one when it's finished? Or he won't stand there all day, have a coffee and chat? And I, I just trying to figure why you need oversight on each project? And how, how long, South Street? How far we're gonna go? Is it 500 feet? One mile?
A mile.
One mile? So you can walk one mile? I'm not sure. So you need 40 hour plus probably gonna overtime, a person sitting there?
What we're paying for them right now is to be the person checking on all the quantities. And if you're not physically there checking quantities and watching compaction, you're not going to get the best, accurate things to do. So, and we wanted to make sure that there was no hiccups going in. You have a 16 and a 20-inch water main going in in that project. You wanted to make sure the compaction was correct. You wanted to make sure they were held to the fire. Now, things are, there's not been oversight on that project, there's not been a full-time guy there this week, because all they're doing is testing.
It's the engineer have the power, if they put their own pipe or own quality in that project, to stop or not paying that company? What's the penalty? Who step in and say?
We do. They, the engineer sends us, contacts us, and then we're the ones that have to stop the work. They can stop it because they can say you're doing faulty work, and they document the faulty work, and then they come to us. It has to come back to the person who's actually paying the check. The engineer, if we're hiring a consulting engineer, they can stop the work because it's dangerous or something's very, very wrong, but if it's, they're not, they're concerned about the quality of the work, it comes back to us to enforce whether it comes down.
So how many engineers right now you have to?
One.
And how many projects you coming?
One.
So.
The only project that's actively in construction is South Street.
And?
And the sewer plant, where they have part-time oversight.
So you will have two, if, if you get hired that person, right?
If we hire the next person for big projects. But we're not hiring that person just for big projects. We're hiring that person to oversee when we do our paving, million dollars that was just approved, and all of the little National Grid, when we do, I've heard lots of comments about National Grid and what they're paving. If we don't, I, I can't be out there every day checking them and yelling at them. I can't. This person will be, every day, making sure National Grid's out there and doing what they're supposed to. When there's other street opening permits around town, we don't get there, to go there every day. Water and sewer might, depending on what it is, but if it's a drainage opening, there's a good chance nobody's going.
So the question is, if we hire the engineer right now, and you work on South Street, how he's gonna do both, National Grid and South Street?
Correct. He's not, he, right. That's, he wouldn't do South Street. We'd leave South Street with the engineer that we have, and the new engineer would start on the new projects.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Steves, then Counsel Jovan.
Thanks. Just wanted to point out, first off, to go back to what Counsel Lozo said a while ago. The Central Street parking lot, by the way, was the CDBG project under Rosemary, which says a lot about why it happened, what happened. But I just wanted to point out also that the fact that we have five major projects in some form of process right now is because a lot of those projects have been sitting in limbo for years, and they needed to be done 10 years ago. And we're finally catching up to doing some of the major projects that should have been done, and were sat in, and were put on the back burner, because back in the early to mid 2000s, say 2010, or probably even before then, a lot of people were so obsessed with not paying extra taxes, and nobody likes paying extra taxes, but they were so obsessed with not paying extra taxes that nothing got done. That was part of the problem. I mean, you may, you may recall doing a lot of extra projects back in the 80s and 90s, but that was a long time ago, Scott. Also, I wanted to ask a question through you to Heather. I remember seeing something in passing about Chapter 90 money going up for the towns. I don't remember what we, how that's affected what we're getting.
So we got what's called the Winter Recovery Grant, I believe.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's about 50% of the Nat Chapter. I don't, I don't, it was like 175,000, if I'm right. And it's very similar to Chapter 90, but it's not, we have to still use the same process for reimbursement as Chapter 90.
No, but I meant specifically that I thought that they were jacking up Chapter 90 by 100 million bucks.
I know there's been requests to jack up Chapter 90, like to double it, but I don't know that that's been approved yet.
Okay.
But we did receive a grant called the Winter Recovery Grant.
Right, I remember that.
Which is supposedly related to, because we had a bad winter.
Right, okay, thanks.
Counsel Jovan.
Just wanna note, the motion on the floor is to eliminate the engineer. Is that the only motion on the floor right now?
Yes, I understand it, yes.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to move that.
Okay. Very good. We have a motion and a second on the floor. To move the question. To move the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Vote was six to one. So the question is being moved. Okay, the motion on the floor is to, I'm sorry?
Roll call.
Okay.
What's the roll call for?
Can you read the motion again?
Um, yeah, hold on.
I think it was, the motion was to eliminate the town engineer assistant from DPW budget.
All right. Very good. What's that? Okay, roll call.
Counsel Jovan?
No.
Counsel Lozo?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
Counsel Steves?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
And Counsel Dow?
No.
Okay, motion fails. There was a hold on veteran services.
I'm all set.
You're all set? Motion, the held hold is withdrawn, and that's it, as far as I know. So now we come to the main motion, which is a vote to adopt the fiscal year 2023 Town and South Beach General Fund operating budget at $59,873,045.
Motion.
Any further discussion? Very good. Roll call vote.
Counsel Lozo?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
The budget, the motion passes, the budget's accepted.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Five-minute recess. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We're now on agenda item number 10. Vote to appropriate the amount of $4,239,111 for the fiscal year 2023 sewer enterprise fund budget to be raised from sewer use charges and other departmental revenues. Second.
Discussion. It was recommended unanimously, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor?
It's a roll call?
Roll call. Every one of them?
Yeah.
All right. Very good, Mary.
We should.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yeah.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Very good. Passes unanimously. Item number 11, vote to appropriate the amount of $3,609,956 for the fiscal year 23 water enterprise fund budget to be raised from water user charges and other departmental revenues.
Second.
Discussion.
Recommended unanimously from the subcommittee, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Very good roll call.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Seven oh. Item number 12, vote to approve revisions to Schedule I for 2% increases effective July 1, 2022, and the minimum wage increases effective January 1, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
It was recommended four to one, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Discussion.
May I ask the DP, I mean, the chairman, what was the descending vote for?
I believe it was Counsel Marquetti who opposed the increases, if I remember correctly, Mr. Chair. You had some questions about the, some of the increases, the 2% increases in that budget.
I did?
That was, I believe, I, I believe that was it. I could be completely wrong, but I'm pretty sure on both these schedules, you had some questions and you voted, ended up voting no in the subcommittee.
I believe she did, yes. Okay.
Anything else? Roll call.
You're gonna do hands, Phil. You don't have to do roll call for all these.
All right.
It was just the budget items, Mr. Chairman.
It was just budget items.
Very good. All right. Show of hands, then, all those in favor? Opposed? Six to one?
I wanna be consistent.
I wanna be consistent.
True.
Counsel, motion passes. Item number 13, vote to approve revisions to Schedule V to approve 2% increases effective July 1, 2022, and the minimum wage increases effective January 1, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Recommended four to one, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 14, vote to reauthorize the leased properties revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for all town-owned leased property from lease payments to be deposited in the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $100,000 per year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Certainly.
I mean, I threw you to either the manager or Karen. This, obviously, these, all of these next several things come up all the time. How much do we actually use these accounts? How much money actually goes through them on a annual basis?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Well, close to those amounts in most of these instances.
That's why.
I couldn't hear that.
I said, close to those amounts in these instances. That's why, even though it's in the bylaws to have it, we still have to put in maximum amount on the expenditures every year. So it's close to these numbers. Some of them are a little bit on the high side.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to check, 'cause I, okay.
Very good. All those, I'm sorry. Counsel Mark Eddy.
Just to be clear on this one, this is from leased properties, right? So?
Yeah.
It's the least, the owners that are paying this, right? Correct?
Am I in all justice? It's the R and V building and?
The R and V is, the R and V, the community, in the community center.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 15, vote to reauthorize the South Ridge Airport Leased Properties Revolving Fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for the leased property at the South Ridge Municipal Airport from lease payments to be deposited in the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $300,000 per year.
So move.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16, vote to reauthorize the totter maintenance revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay for the replacement of lost and/or damaged totters from fees by homeowners and deposited in the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the Health Department and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $15,000 per year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 17, vote to reauthorize the demolition of buildings revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay expenses associated with the demolition of buildings within the Town of South Ridge, and any revenue recaptured to be deposited in the account, with all expenditures from the account not to exceed $185,000.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Steves.
I mean, a quick question is, obviously, we've been doing this forever too, but we also have a line item for something like $400,000 that's been sitting there in the Health Department Capital Fund for demolition of buildings. How come that is not actually included in this revolving fund?
Through the chair, because they were actually voted as either capital projects or special articles. They just accounted for separately.
I mean, would it, would it make sense, either from an accounting point of view or a legal point of view, to, to just hike this revolving fund, to include that sum so that we can have it completely roll, continue to roll over? And that they, that, because I know, I realize that in many cases, they have situations where they put liens on these properties and it takes forever that it gets paid back. But would it make sense to do that?
I don't, I don't know if it really matters one way or the other. Might as well just keep the money where it is and where it was voted, you know, for the purpose as of, from before, and I can look into it and see if we can, you know, because you'd have to appropriate into it.
Okay. Okay. It just occurred to me. I didn't seem to make much sense of multiple accounts for doing the same thing, so.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, Counsel Mark Eddy.
Thank you through you. But this, this account would be from, associated with fines and, and other expenditures. This would be from, like, from the owners, right? From the owner of the building would have to pay into this in order for us to demolish their building. We would put a lien on their property. There would be a fine or something like that, correct? So you'd probably want to keep them separate, I would think.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, yeah, I think I would, because it actually works kind of the other way. Like, we would demolish it first, and then when we put the lien on and they sell it, then we get the money back. Then the money would go in here to demolish other buildings. So yeah, I mean, I would agree that I think we should keep it separate, but I can look into it to see if we can combine them, but.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 18, vote to reauthorize the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay expenses associated with the administration and collection of fines in violation of Mass. General Law, Chapter 148A and Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2009, such fines to be deposited in the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $2,500.
So move. Second.
Discussion. Very well.
Just a quick question.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Town Manager, what does the hearing officer get paid as a salary? I mean, can you use this funding? No?
We use, we do give a stipend to the hearing officer who handles a lot of our dog hearing and other tickets and things. So there is a stipend, is it, I believe it's $2,500.
Ms. Van.
We can use the money. It's just that a lot of the 21D violations aren't related to this particular type of fee. So they usually go into the general fund rather than in here. So that's why we also do an appropriation for it out of the legal budget.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 19, vote to reauthorize the South Ridge Middle High School Store Revolving Fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay expenses associated with the school store from receipts to be deposited into the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the school superintendent and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $30,000 per year. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 20, vote to adopt the town manager's five-year capital plan, fiscal years 2023 to 2027.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Mark Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I spoke to the town manager earlier, and I, I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench into this, but as I explained, the capital planning committee is in favor of the five-year plan. You're in favor of the five-year plan. We went to the charter review, and they're in favor of the five-year plan, but the charter still says six-year plan, and there was no vote taken on that. So I don't know if a sixth year could just be added after tonight. I know the intent was there to go to five.
Counsel Joe Van. I certainly respect Counsel Mark Eddy's point, and that, I guess we are in a quandary on that. I would, I would say that, well, why don't we vote to, to amend this and vote to adopt a six-year plan and hold in abeyance FY29 until it's further developed. So at least we get the vote on it, and, you know, we just don't have anything developed on the plan itself. Well, in agreement, I think I am. I'm satisfied that the town manager has fulfilled the requirements that we set forth on a good faith basis. If we want to adopt it as an FY, as a six-year capital budget with the proviso that, we know that FY29 is not, is in abeyance, pending further charter review, however we want to word that. But I don't think we should hold off on adopting this. We should move it forward.
I think you made that motion, didn't he? Didn't Jack make the motion in the first place?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, I did.
I made the second, so I would accept it as a friendly amendment. You're making the friendly amendment, so we don't need to vote on the amendment.
Okay. Mr. McCall.
Although we didn't have all department heads submit some of the matters all the way out for the six years, because we did, we did have a lot of discussion about the five years, and we were experimenting with this new format. I did carry in some items into fiscal 28, so I did cover six years. You will see that there are six fiscal year columns, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and a future years column. So even though we may have called it on the motion, a five-year plan, we do have some of the recurring costs that I, I took the liberty of adjusting for some of the regular things like purchasing cruisers, certain fire capital in other departments, and did carry them forward, including lighted buildings. So technically, I do have items in the six-year column. So it would satisfy.
Yep. So, I'm sorry, I withdraw my original motion and just amend this vote to adopt the town manager's, the town, the town manager's presentation of the Town of South Ridge Capital Improvement Program FY2023 to FY2028 as presented tonight as a document, because it is, it is six capital years.
Okay, second.
So I'll withdraw my original and just amend this instead of saying town manager's five-year capital plan, so that it reads, vote to adopt the Town of South Ridge Capital Improvement Program FY2023 to FY2028 as presented by the town manager.
Second.
Second. Very good. Any further discussion? Counsel Lazo.
I'd like to make a motion to strike the Forest Street truck.
This is just the plan itself, not the, we have a further motion.
We're looking at that.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
We cannot amend the?
It's the next motion.
Next to general.
Okay, go ahead.
It's the next to general.
But, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
I'm getting a little confused. We're gonna accept it.
That was the plan.
It's a backwards plan.
And then you refund it.
You're talking about the amendment. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought it was wrong. Glad to vote on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman? It was a friendly amendment, so we don't need to vote on the amendment.
What?
I said it was a friendly amendment, so we don't need to vote on the amendment.
All right, now I'm confused.
No, Mr. Chairman, if I may, point of clarification. I made a, I withdrew my other motion and made a formal motion to amend this agenda item.
Yep.
To simply, and this, to Counsel Lazo's point, this is just the plan as presented. The next agenda item is the appropriation of funds, at which time, if you don't wish to appropriate it, it would just be changed on the plan itself.
Right.
So this is just to approve the plan as presented.
So without a document.
Okay. Everyone all set? All those in favor?
Of my amendment.
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present.
So we now will vote on the?
Now you have to vote as amended.
Now we have to vote on the amended.
I would request a roll call. I was just.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Joe Van?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Mark Eddy?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh.